Meeting is being recorded. We are live streaming to Facebook. You're all set.
Thank you. All right. We will call this special meeting of the Board of Finance to order. Today is Thursday, May 6th. It's 4:04 in the afternoon. I'll do a quick roll call of Board of Finance members to make sure we are all on and able to be heard. Myself, Tim O'Brien is on. Glenn Freshman, are you on?
Here.
Mike Farback?
I'm here.
Lynn Young, were you able to pull in? Deb Norman?
I'm here.
Bob Statchen?
Here.
And David Motherway?
Present.
Jim Sullivan, you're on too?
I'm on.
Great. And Jill Senior, I saw you on as well. Um, I don't have my cheat sheet right now. We'll open up comments from the public. Do they have to press star? Star what, Roger?
It'll be star for the phone to raise your hand, and then when you're called on, press star six.
There you go. Thank you, Roger. And I remind everyone, two things. If you're not talking, please mute your microphones. And if you are talking, please identify yourself as you speak so that we can record it, get everything set. If there's any comments from the public, we'll take those at this time. So you can either raise your hand in the WebEx meeting or hit star three on your phone. Any comments from the public?
I have called users. I've seen no hands raised. Several people in the meeting itself, also no hands raised.
All right. We're going to next item on the agenda is approval of the previous minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the April 7th, 2001 meeting?
Mike, so moved.
Deb Norman, second.
Thank you, Mike and Deb. Any discussion, any other correction to the minutes as submitted? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please state your name and that you are opposed. Okay, those meetings are approved as submitted. New business. The first item on the agenda is additional appropriation.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, go ahead, Jill.
Um, I didn't resend all the previous minutes because it was a large file and we were having problems transmitting them. Um, but we do have a bunch of minutes from March that aren't approved yet.
Okay.
The ones that were tabled on last month.
You know what, Jill? How about we table them again and we'll get to them at the next regular meeting?
Okay, yep, we're short on time. I get it.
Yeah, we'll do. We'll table those for now.
Okay.
Thank you. Jill, if you can remind me before the next one so that we can, we can get those taken care of because I had missed, I had missed that on my end. My fault.
No problem. That's fine. Thanks, Jim.
All right. Next item on the agenda is new business, additional appropriations. Jim, I'm seeing a change of the additional appropriations from fund balance?
Right. But right below it, you'll see that we may have a change this meeting depending on whether or not the funding that the educate, economic development commission or department is asking for will become from fund balance or from line item transfers from the WPCA project. So if you think it's going to come from a transfer, we can just skip right over that.
Let's skip right over it for now and let's look at the numbers both ways when we get down to that one, if that's okay with you.
Very good. Yep.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is request from the Board of Selectmen for an additional appropriation of $37,398 from the WPCA. WPCA SIP line to the
Tim, you skipped over, you skipped over setting the mill rate.
Okay. I must have, no. What I have is, okay, the one that's in front of me that Jill emailed was that's after this additional appropriation.
Yeah, I thought, I thought you were going to hold off on the additional appropriation, go down, talk about a transfer first, that we just said?
Um, yeah, well, I was just going down the agenda item because I can't change the agenda because it's a special meeting.
Okay, all right, sorry.
That's okay. Um, but I will, I will, Jim is right. We ought to keep everything in mind as we're looking at each one of these. There is a totality here to it all. Then, so the next is the request from the Board of Selectmen for additional appropriation, $37,398 from WPCA SIP to Pocket Dock Sidewalk SIP line item. Can I get a motion to approve that line item, that additional appropriation?
So moved. Glenn Freshman.
Can I get a second, please?
Second, Deb Norman.
This is Bob Statchen. I just have a question on this. Is this the?
Okay, I got a motion. Hang on, Bob. I got a motion in a second. Now, Danielle, can you go over this or do you want of what's going on here? Now we'll have a discussion about it.
Tim, I'm, I'm on the line. I can answer that if that's, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Especially since I think Danielle might be in the car. So we've had an unusual circumstance here where we need the $37,398 now. We have it approved from 60 days from now. We're 60 days ahead of the construction schedule. And so what's really happened is I need that money to keep going and to keep going with the engineering work and also to keep going on with the legal review that's required as part of the contract. Now, all these items are actually part of the grant of the $600,000 Urban Act grant. But because we had actually put the rest of that money on the other side of July 1, now I'm in a strange situation because I don't want to hold for 60 days while we wait for the money to be available. So that's really what I'm asking for is if we can please make the money available now so that I can keep going with the project.
Okay, that helps with that background, Susan. I appreciate it. Questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman, Glenn Freshman, this will in no way compromise our getting the full $600,000 grant that we are applying town funds, and I would recommend a line item transfer over an appropriation that won't compromise the award of the total grant funds.
No, it will not. This is Jim Sullivan. It will not.
Okay.
Additional questions? Go to Mike.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, my, my instinct is same as Glenn's here in terms of I'd probably prefer to do the line item transfer rather than the additional appropriation unless Jim, you would advise against that for some reason?
No, I put both options down there. I, I, I think the the transfer is a simpler and more sensible thing to do, but I didn't know if you guys, the board, had, you know, earmarked, there's like $412,000 still sitting in that was WPCA project. I didn't know if anybody had earmarked that or had future plans for that. So I just wanted to give you both options, either additional appropriation or take it from the WPCA project.
So the sense I'm getting is that we would prefer the line item transfer, which is my sent, my feeling as well. So Glenn, can I ask you to? You made the motion. Can you rescind the motion? Or can we do that or do we just want to vote no on it?
We can just, we can either rescind the motion or vote no and then accomplish the same task via fund, via line item transfer because both are on the agenda. And the order of the agenda, as long as you accomplish the agenda, the order is up to the chairman. We just can't take anything that's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda and move it. Okay. All right. So why don't, Glenn, why don't I ask you to rescind your motion?
I will be happily, happy to rescind my motion.
I have one question. Sorry. Sorry about that. Just, just for my education purposes, we do this line item transfer now. What happens to the funding on the other side of one Ju, of one July?
Well, essentially, as it stands now, what you appropriated, you would have a $39,000 of money that can't be spent. So we could take that and you could, you know, you could leave it there in case the, the project needs that extra additional funding anyways, which may, is a high, is a high likelihood of that possibly being the case, or you could transfer to some other project where you could just let the, that, that balance of it lapse and the money will drop back out into fund balance.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that motion has been rescinded, so we will not continue on that. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is to set the mill rate for fiscal year 21, 22 at 23.85 mills. I think I got the motion.
So moved. Bob Statchen?
I got a second?
Second, Glenn Freshman.
Second from Glenn. Any discussion from members? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please state your name and that you're opposed. Okay, motion's carried. Mill rate is set at 23.85 mills. Um, next item on the agenda is request from the First Selectman and the Chief to transfer $7,500 from the officer's salary lines to Human Services New Line Community Outreach Specialists. Can I get a motion to approve that transfer?
Deb Norman, so, so moved.
Can I get a second? Mike, discussion. This, I don't see the chief on. Danielle, I know you're in the car. Do you want to?
No, I'm, I'm back at town hall. Yeah, no, thank you. So this is essentially, we'd like to start this position about a month early. Starting July 1, hopefully start in early, to early June. And the chief offered up this, um, a little bit of extra money he had from people either retiring or leaving for this kind of one-time appropriation and essentially just to share from the chief's perspective, why this became so urgent is they're seeing a high volume increase in calls for both kind of mental health, senior services, the, the full gamut. So we're ready to move super quickly on our side and hopefully bring someone on if we could get this, this request approved. Thank you.
Any questions from members?
It's Mike. I'm, I'm just curious, Danielle, do we have a, maybe an individual or two in mind already that we think we can move on pretty quickly?
Can we lose you, Danielle?
Um, Mike, I'm seeing that Danielle and Chris, that both of them went to low bandwidth.
Okay.
I'm in a different spot, so I think that's why I didn't. Sorry.
Well, Mike, I think I, I have a little, I think they do have a, a candidate in mind.
Okay.
And if the money, and if the money was approved, I think they would be able to actually act on it by, by June and have it positioned filled by, by June.
All right.
Okay.
Jim, you cover it, right?
Yeah, I got your back.
Okay. All right, that was, that was helpful. No, thanks. It seems, seems to make sense to me then.
Any other questions from members? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Please state your name and that you're opposed. All right, that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is a request from the Director of Economic Development to transfer $37,398 from WPCA SIP to the Pocket Dock Sidewalk. So can I get a motion for this?
Glenn Freshman, so moved.
Bob Statchen, second.
Second.
I had, I heard first Glenn Freshman with the motion, the Bob Statchen with the second. Um, this is the same one that Susan discussed earlier for the additional appropriation. We're looking at a line item transfer. Are there any other questions from members? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please state your name and that you're opposed. All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, next is a request from the Solid Waste Manager to transfer $35,437.50 from line item of disposal fees to accounts 10152-80267 for $27,041.50 and to 10152-8255, $8,396 for parts and labors to fund the purchase of foam tires and yellow bags. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Deb Norman?
Mike, so moved. Mike, I'll second.
Motion from Deb Norman, Mike with the second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please state your name and that you're opposed. Motion unanimously carries. All right. Uh, next, we have a bid waiver request from the Town Engineer to approve the contractor for repairs to the Lantern Hill Road Bridge. Chris, before I look for a motion, why don't I have you give us the update on this at this point?
Absolutely. Good evening or good afternoon, everyone. Chris Greenlaw, Town Engineer. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, hear you, hear you just fine, Chris. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, this afternoon, I also have with me the Director of Public Works, Barbara McCrell. And additionally, I have our consultant W from WMC Engineers, Jay Costello. And, um, I wrote a guidance memo today and I apologize for that. And I want to thank everyone for being here and having a special meeting. The original request, as we tried to expedite the schedule of the project, was to receive bids and ask for a bid waiver on, on the cusp of actually receiving them. And we had a little bit of a hiccup. So therefore, I wrote this guidance memo. I'd like to read this into the record and, uh, and explained a little background and perhaps a plan going forward and kind of developed that today. And I'll get into detail if, if I may. Uh, the direct, uh, the Department of Public Works, as I said, the original intent was to request a bid waiver for Lantern Hill Bridge for the structural interim repairs. However, the three bid quotes we received were close, actually within 7.75 variance of one another. They were, they were close in cost, but greater than the anticipated amount. Therefore, this provides bid quote results or request for your approval to increase the project's anticipated expenditures and award the contract to Dayton Construction Company in the amount of $160,830. Now that's contingent upon the Town of Leger's approval, which is dictated also by the MOU that we have with them. Uh, the background on this, the Lantern Hill Bridge had previously been identified for the structural interim repairs with bid quotes solicited in late April to select a group of contractors with competent bridge experience. Bid quotes were received as of Tuesday, the 4th. And within the 4th to this morning, those bids were analyzed by our consultant with a low apparent bid quote of $160,000 again and $830. A number that is quite, it's vastly larger than the original estimated $100,000. Bid quotes from all contractors are attached. After reviewing consultation with the bidders via our consultant, the following determinations of the quote were realized. Number one, uh, and this is conjunction, this is with the recommendation and insight from our consultant, which is, which is here also to answer questions. So number one, what was realized was the COVID-19 slowed the entire economy last year. Now, after hiatus, the construction market is rapidly escalating, including pricing as demand is high for work in this market sector. Uh, the market coupled with our project being very small adds for the inflation of a construction firm to mobilize and commit their schedule to a brief two-week project timeline. Our required construction timeline of June may have drove prices higher for water handling. Uh, if you refer to the document we sent, you can see that water handling was significantly higher with the contractors' expectations of potential weather or water volume being hired as compared to maybe a July or August start date. The contractors provided a higher and expected M and P or maintenance protection of traffic costs with their anticipation of having live traffic for such a restrained or geometrically challenged, as I put it, corridor costs. Um, I want to note that the three quotes that we received were, again, within 7.75 variance. So the numbers that we have at least are consistent among the contractors. That's an important note. And again, these quotes were received on the 4th and analyzed. Uh, recommendations, spoiler alert, the recommendation from us is, is for option three, but I, I want to, for the benefit of the the commission, go over three options. So we could have no bid waiver and go out for a traditional bid format. The project timeline for repairs will render the bridge closed prior and during the construction schedule. The benefit is to extend the timeline into drier weather for, for a perceived lower cost, although there's that is not our, that is not our, our recommendation. The other option again is no bid waiver and re-quote the repair work to include a reduced method of structural repair at a lower cost resulting in a lower extended service life of the bridge, maybe two years. The, this idea is that the effort would extend the life of the bridge long enough until the bridge funding becomes available via state DOT. I have received, as of, I believe, April 26th, I received information from the State of Connecticut that stated that pursuant to legislative funding, uh, the first available date for funding would be in the early months of 2022 to the state, uh, bridge project. But there's no guarantee on that, but I just wanted to extend that timeline to you. That would be a possible vehicle if the commission would be interested in, in replacing the bridge. So option number two, re-quote the work at a lesser method or repair to get us two years and then with the hope of funding being available via the state, we, we could look at replacements. So that's, that's an option. Uh, option number three, and this is the option that we recommend, would be for the approval of the increased project cost for the repair of the bridge in conjunction with a bid waiver. This places us on schedule with the caveat again that Leger also assumes the cost increase via, via the MOU. Um, so the third option is the option before us. The bids again were very tight within themselves. Uh, the cost over the original estimate is roughly $60,800. So respectfully, if Leger was on board with assuming or having the costs with us, that would be an increase of $30,450 roughly. And that cost, we do have funding to cover that cost. Also, the contractors that did provide us bid quotes, I want to reiterate that these are competent contractors that our consultant has worked with. So it's a select few of contracts. So we believe in the numbers that we have because of their contractors that they've worked with before and, uh, the prices amongst themselves are, are within that tolerance. So, uh, that's the information I have before you. I'd like to open it up to questions. Uh, there's a lot of information I provided to you in addition to the bid tabulation sheet. And, uh, any questions, myself and the consultant, hopefully we can answer your questions.
Before we open it up to members, hang on a second, Glenn. Jay, is there anything you want to add to what Chris said before we open it up to the rest of the members?
Uh, no, I'm just here to answer questions. Hopefully I don't have anything really be pretty much explained it pretty well.
Okay, okay. Mr. Freshman, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, my, my question regards really to the First Selectman. Have you had discussions with the Mayor of Leger regarding this cost increase? Are they willing to shoulder their share? Because if they are, I would support option three, but if they're not, no.
Yeah, no, Glenn, that's a great question. We actually have a call or meeting set up with them for tomorrow afternoon. And so we'll, we'll talk through this. And again, I think why Chris wrote up the, um, that as contingent on Leger accepting it. So we would, we'd only obviously do this if, if they're also on board. As Chris mentioned, this is kind of option three is really the only option, keeping the bridge open. If not, it's closing next month. So I know that is a top priority for the president. So I would assume that, but we wouldn't obviously move forward without letting
Um, let me, let me also add to that, that at this point, I'll remind members, we're looking at a bid waiver request for them so that they can continue forward, the funding of which, um, that additional 30,000 or 60,000, whichever would come before us, I'm assuming in a line item transfer later, um, later on that they would need to do. So we're, we are right now just trying to focus on the bid waiver request and the funding of that will have the information from Leger prior to, prior to getting into that.
Hi, this is Bob Statchen. I, I have a quick question, more of a procedural question. We have three bids in front of us. Is it that there was a, a, an informal process of seeking these bids and that's why we're in the bid waiver, waiver request structure?
Yes, Bob, this is Jim Sullivan. These are really more proposals than they are bids. This was not a public bid. Just the, uh, the, the consulting engineer, WMC, asked three of the providers they routinely work with to submit, submit quotes.
Thank, thanks, Jim. And just a quick follow-up and somewhat in relation to Tim's comment that when, when, Chris, when you say that you have, you have the funds available, it means you have the, the funds available, but would need that line item transfer in order to do that?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay. And what, where would they, those be coming from? Where would that line item transfer be coming from?
We have a couple of options. Uh, we have some remaining funds in the CIP specific for the Lantern Hill Bridge. And, uh, when I spoke to the commission, uh, earlier this spring, in advance of our bridge program, you allocated funds to another SIP account to allow us to start working forward on all bridges and, uh, actually funded that. I believe it was, uh, maybe the chairman could help me or, or Jim, it was a transfer from the WPCA and we utilized those funds, uh, allocated via a line item transfer to cover the difference.
Okay, thanks. I would, I would support, I would support the recommendation then. I would just more procedural questions, but I would support the recommendation. Thank you.
Deb Norman, I have a quick, quick question about, is the split with, um, Leger, is it a 50/50 split?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, it's Mike Farback. I have a question for Chris or perhaps the consultants. First, let me start by saying I know nothing about Bridgert here. But I did go through the, the, you know, the detailed quotes that were provided, um, the line by line items in the features of quotes. And Chris was saying that, you know, the, the totals are pretty darn close, which at some levels reassuring. But I guess what made me a little uneasy was, um, the low bidder had an extremely low estimate on this self-consolidating concrete line item, which the consultant estimated at 30,000. You know, two other, two of the other bidders came in, you know, uh, in that neighborhood, one, one above that and another one slightly below that. But the low bidder came in at just $6,000 for self-consolidating concrete. So um, that sounds pretty fundamental to bridge construction. But what, what, what am I missing there? Or what, why is, you know, do we need to worry about something with the low bidder at such a low estimate for that line?
Sure, I mean, I, I would suggest that he liked, if you look at his, uh, mobilization number, I, I think he moves some of that money into his lump sum items to be sure that he would get some of that money upfront. And, um, uh, so I think that's where some of the money is and that's why his number is lower.
Is that something we need to pressure test or make sure he's not using some, you know, cheaper material relative to what everyone else would typically use?
No, it will be required to, uh, we're, we're going to run tests at the, at the plant to make sure that we're getting the mix that we want beforehand. And we'll also be running tests on it at the site to make sure it's the same stuff coming out of the, coming out of the chute. So he'll have to meet, he'll have to meet tests and the materials that he provide. He won't be able to cheat on the material.
That's right.
And he's, he's not a contractor that's going to do that kind of thing.
I just, I just think he moved his, his money into a couple of
I just, I just think he moved his, his money into a couple of other items.
All right, well, I, I don't have any experience with this, so I'll defer to the experts, but that seemed like a pretty dramatic difference and then just want to make sure we weren't missing something there.
Other questions from members? Hey, hearing none, um, can I get a motion to approve the bid waiver for the project? The amount of one hundred sixty thousand dollars, eight hundred, one hundred sixty, eight hundred thirty thousand, I'm going to get this right on the third try, I promise. I get a motion to approve a bid waiver for the amount of a hundred sixty thousand eight hundred thirty dollars for the use of Dayton Construction Company for the Lantern Hill Bridge project. We got a motion from Mike because I heard his name, do, do I have a second?
Here, Bob Staton, second.
Motion from Mike, second from Bob, any further discussion on the motion? No, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. The motion unanimously passes, um, thanks for your work on this, Chris, I know it was hard to pull everything together that we were looking for last minute, so appreciate you getting this to us so that we can keep moving.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also thank the commission for having this special meeting to move our project forward, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Um, next is correspondence, Jim or Jill, do we have any correspondence?
We do not have any correspondence.
No correspondence, uh, liaison reports, uh, SIP liaison, there's nothing, WPCA Lynn is not on, uh, Mr. Freshman, do you have anything from Board of Ed?
I had a conversation with the chairman of the Board of Ed and, uh, he is waiting the arrival of the OCA report, that's all I have.
Any other liaison reports?
Yeah, it's Deb Norman, um, for the nonprofits, the library, we had a discussion about the split and that's all taken care of, it's going forward, it's fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, and everybody knows and is happy.
Great.
Thanks, Deb. Uh, any other, um, liaison reports?
Just, uh, Mike, just one quick one, uh, I heard from Linda, again, our tax collector and, uh, she brought a brief update on tax collections, uh, and just in summary real quickly here, uh, we've collected sixty-six point six million, uh, to date, uh, and at this point in time, in the prior year, we'd collected sixty-five point four million, so, you know, we are, are ahead of where we were at this, uh, this point last year, so I have, uh, about two months left to collect and so things continue to, to, to trend in, in a positive direction and, and, you know, we've been able to sustain the, the rate of collection that we had to be, i- 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 I think there'll be some chasing, there is some chasing that's coming on right now and Linda and her team do an excellent job of following up, uh, we kind of are at that point, um, but, but again, uh, I think the good news is, uh, we, we, by and large, held, held the collection rate, uh, that we're hoping for throughout the year.
Excellent, boy, they're, they're doing good. I'm, I'm impressed with how the town has done through the, through the pandemic here. Uh, any other liaison reports? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Deb Norman, so moved.
We got a motion from David, a second from Mike, uh, and we are adjourned, thank you everybody and we will plan on, um, our regular meeting for, um, June.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.